Hi, everybody. Good to see everybody tonight. We're going to go ahead and -- we've got a minute, but we're going to go ahead and get started because we've got a couple of things we want to get start before we get into the formal part of the meeting. First of all, I would just ask if everyone would stand, please. We want to take a moment of silence. We lost a community member today. We want to take a moment of silence to honor that person. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next up, we deferred this from our last board meeting because one of the guys -- is he here, Amy? Is Ben here? Okay. I've got a really packed agenda, so if we get -- we may run out of time. Okay? I'm just warning you, we may run out of time. Okay, we'll keep moving forward. Any declaration of conflicts by any board members on anything on the agenda tonight? Yes, Mark?
Potential conflict for the North Shore Development Moratorium. I work for the carpenters union.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. In this case, because you're getting paid, I would recommend that you recuse yourself on any voting. Okay, thank you. All righty. First up, we have the Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you.
This is more than a public courtesy. It's the law. So, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change under paragraph and make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary, if it is safe to do so, or if possible, two lanes over which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. Emergency vehicles means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles while personnel are working. And that's it. Any questions?
Bob?
Yeah, I'm particularly concerned about wildland fires. I think we all are. Could you give us a little bit of detail about how many acres were burned, how many units responded, and if this was a large acreage that landowner could have been more conscientious about?
Okay, so to answer that question, I could tell you where these fires were. So, we had one fire on Haleeva Road by Long Bridge, and then the other fire was over by Kamanaui and Ka'akona Hua Road.
That one?
Yes.
Any more details than that?
That's as much detail as I have for you at the moment.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, what was the cause? I heard what it was, but I'm not sure. What was the cause of the Haleeva Long Bridge fire?
So, the cause is undetermined.
But there were propane tanks that were exploding.
As of right now, I'm aware that it's undetermined, but we can look into that for you and get back to your next community board meeting.
Thank you.
Community, any questions for HFD? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time tonight. Mahalo. All right. HPD?
Aloha, Lieutenant Romel Baisa from the Honolulu Police Department, Waheva Police Station. I'll be reporting for the statistics for the month of August, and I want to compare thus far for the month of September. So, we've had two aggravated assaults in the month of August, so far zero in September. Burglary, we had two compared to one in September. Motor vehicle collisions, 42 in August compared to 22 in September so far. Eight motor vehicle collisions with vehicles towed and seven in September. We've had zero robberies for both September and August. We've had eight car break-ins, UEMVs, unauthorized entry into motor vehicle for August and five in September. Total calls for service for the month of August for the Waialua and Haleeva district is 940, and then 689 so far in September. I know you guys asked about the citations that were issued. I can report six criminal offenses, both in August, six so far in September. As far as parking violations, 226 in August compared to 202 so far in September. Traffic violations, 719 in August and 551 in September. That includes everything, including speeding. I know a concern was, I guess you wanted to see if we can separate this by location, and the answer is no, we cannot. We don't do that. HPD does not do that. So, apologize for that. Yes, sir?
So, when you have vehicle violations, do you count bicycles as that? What, I missed it. I'm sorry. Oh, go for it.
Bob, do you have a question?
I didn't hear you.
Go for it.
Okay, so you talk -- one of the problems out here is guys who turn our highway into a playground on their electric motorcycles or bikes and up and down bike paths. And when you say you have vehicle violations, are any of them related to that kind of violation?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. In fact, we did a project in June -- I'm sorry, in July and August for that very, very reason, the e-bikes and all the enforcement, the e-bike enforcement. So, sorry if some of your children got cited, but we're doing it based on a complaint of the community.
Go ahead, Erica.
So, to kind of answer the question that they said cannot be answered, there is crime mapping. It's after the fact, of course, but if you go on, I think it's honolulu.gov, and you look up crime mapping, it will tell you exactly what's happening, exactly where, and when.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Board members, and yes, Maka?
Aloha, officers. Mahalo for your report. Wondering if you folks have anything or have been notified of any illegal vacation rentals?
No, that actually does not go through the police department. It goes through DPP. DPP, thank you.
Great. And so if they've reached out to you, then you do send them over to DPP?
Yes.
Mahalo.
Thanks. Maka, any other board members? Okay, community, any questions? Yes, Earl, please come up to the front. Yes. You have no choice.
The reason I came up, by them mentioning about the kids on their bikes, this new thing coming out with these e-bikes, it's just bound to happen to see a kid get killed. I'm telling you. I'm standing in front of my driveway. They're doing wheelies past my house, and it seems fun. All the cars coming the other way, okay? It's good to be young, but when you're young like that, you're not thinking, your brains -- we was all young ones, and we did stupid things. This is one thing. Then, I seen three young ladies, 14 years old and older, I mean, younger than that, on a one bike taking off down the road. Nothing has been done about it. Every single day, I see these e-bikes go by my house, also in the middle of town. They're supposed to obey the law. They come and flying by you on the right side. Now, if a car happened to turn in, somebody's going to get hurt. It needs to be stopped. It needs to be regulated. Some kind of a thing where they're going to learn about it, okay? That's one thing. The next one is, on Haleeva Road, we had a meeting here with the neighborhood board about the speeding on Haleeva Road. We turned around, it was a 15-mile zone. After I came and complained over here, the neighborhood board has it on market. Guess what they did? Your sergeant was here, your lieutenant was here, they made the speed limit go up to 20 miles an hour. Does that make sense? That's completely out of line, okay? Now, from Haleeva Joe's, just down to my corner, four, five accidents where they went off the ramp, took the fire hydrant out. Three, four kids speeding, off the road, in the water. They're lucky nobody died. I saw four, five accidents happen there. I talked to the officers and all that, and they said, "We're looking into it." I mean, something needs to be done. A speed bump maybe might help.
Thanks, Earl.
If we get from you guys to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good points. Actually, Earl, we have been asked to put up speed bumps by the harbor, so we are going to be taking up this issue at our future, not a distant future, meeting. So, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, Maka?
Mahalo. E-bikes are fairly new. Motocross bikes are not as new. Speed also is a factor with them. Cutting in between vehicles as we're driving down Gooddale, right? They're all going to school. I think our concerted effort and our collaborative approach to maybe remind the school or kindly ask the school to talk about safety and their -- the students' use of their bikes, e-bikes, motocross bikes, whatever it is, and the rules and laws that they need to abide by. So, I appreciate you speaking that. Also, want to encourage whatever DOE school representatives we have from Waialua High and out that side to maybe encourage that type of conversation with the students. HPD, if you could also enforce that or share that with the students.
Yes, thank you very much. When you say nothing is being done, again, I gave you the statistics of the type of enforcement that we do, the projects that we do, but I'd also like to encourage to be a step ahead of that, the parents, yeah, to educate the children. It's not right. So, the police cannot be there all the time. When you say nothing is being done, the police may or may not be there, but yeah, it starts with the home. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for -- yes, Karen, please come up.
I am an e-bike rider, and I want to say that the kids do it really dangerously. I try to be careful. I think it's a great way to get around, but my question is, where are we supposed to ride? I mean, I don't go on the bike path. I try, you know, I have to go on the road. I don't go, you know, 35 miles an hour, so I stay off to the side, which is -- I don't know if that's technically a bike path or not. There's some places where the road is literally as wide as my tire on the other side of that white line. It's super sketchy. There's gravel all over the place. There's sand on the road. There's wood. It's extremely dangerous, but I don't mind a little action. It's kind of fun, but -- But what I'm saying is, we need an alternative. We need -- we have -- we need to get rid of cars off the road, and biking is a great idea, but it's -- tell me. My question would be, where are we supposed to ride?
Thanks, Karen. Okay, thanks, Earl. Earl, please, Earl. Thank you. Thank you.
May I respond?
Go ahead, sir.
So, just a little background on myself. I formerly was assigned to vehicle or homicide section. I've been trained in investigating many crashes, including motorcycles and bicycles. One of the things to consider with this is e-bikes, we're lumping a lot of things in that aren't necessarily e-bikes. If it has pedals to manually pedal, that's an e-bike. If it doesn't have pedals to manually pedal, depending on the size of the motor, it's either in a moped or a motorcycle. If it's a moped or motorcycle, it must be made street legal. Turn signals, brake lights, headlights, you've got to have a license to drive it. A lot of them are being bought as off-road-only-use dirt bikes. So, they are -- it's just like driving a dirt bike if it doesn't have pedals and the motor's strong enough to be classified as a motorcycle. So, again, we really need the parents to step up because the kids are not buying these five $8,000 bikes on their own. Somebody's buying it for them, and we just need to ride legally like the e-bikes. You can drive on the bike path with an e-bike. An e-motorcycle cannot. It's not street legal.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, we're going to keep moving on because we've got a lot going on tonight, and we want to get to everything. Gentlemen, it was nice to meet both of you. You have a lovely evening. Take care. Aloha. Okay, Board of Water Supply. I'm going to forego my report and just go right to questions. Does anyone have any questions for me regarding your water? Nope? Okay, great. Keep moving on. Residents' concerns. Okay, residents' concerns, you need to come to the front. You have a two-minute time limit to state your concern. We do time you, so please go ahead, Karen.
Okay, I got one I'm commissioned to do, so I don't think this one doesn't count, okay? So -- I don't know. Haleeva Christmas Parade, December 13th, Friday, the road will be closed. So, if you want to enter the parade or you have any questions about it, contact Erica, 808-723-0953. Okay. Now, mine, because I do, I've observed things, there's an Ahupua'a sign at the entrance to Sunset Beach Elementary School, and the signs are the wrong way. So, you guys know that. Okay, so anyway, we just -- that's really been bugging me. Okay. Um -- Okay. Okay, and then, since that's already taken care of, I just think that when we call 911, we should be able to get the lifeguards too, because sometimes you see somebody in trouble and you call 911, and there's no lifeguard option. So, I think that they need to add an lifeguard option. Aloha.
Yes, Dell?
Hi. First of all, I really want to thank whoever's responsible of putting those speed bumps in. It's a great idea for the community. I mean, a lot of safety issues. But can we extend it into the Pa'ala'kai homes? Because there's a lot of vehicles that use that route to bypass the traffic, and when they come through, they're speeding. I mean, the speed limit in there is 25 miles, and even on the regular highways, 25 miles in residential areas are very dangerous. So, if we can try and do that, see if we can get them in a Pa'ala'kai area, the housing area. Number two is Haleeva Beach Park. Is there a possibility we can put more lighting where the playground is? It's really dark, and our kids are there, and I actually have to go there and watch my grandkids, I mean, like, right next to the playground. There's a lot of homeless there, a lot of vagrants. So, if we can somehow put more lighting in Haleeva Beach Park playground area for our Kekis, that's it.
Thanks, Dell. Appreciate it. Any other residents' concerns? I'm going to lift the ban -- I'm sorry, Eric, I didn't get a chance to tell you earlier. I'm going to lift the ban on board members tonight because some stuff has popped up of serious note. So, Board Member Antolini. Thank you.
Aloha. My name is N'po Kason Fisher. I wanted to mahalo the police officers for the continued hard work in our community. We live across from Kayaka Beach Park, and usually there's a lot of police officers present, but lately they haven't been there, probably for many reasons. We've noticed people cutting the locks, like, sawing the locks off when the gates are locked in the evening. Lots of extra activity that never used to be there. So, if we could get police back at the Kayaka Beach Park, that would be great. Also, to support the Ahupua'a sign. The Pa'ala'a Kamanaui sign is swapped, is wrong way, if we could fix that. I did call the county. They didn't call me back. Okay, thank you.
So, aloha. I'm wearing my hat as a community member living in Pupukea. I wanted to talk about the severe public safety issue at Kami's Beach. A lot of you saw the news tonight. It'll be in the news tomorrow. Some of you have been alerted that there are two houses that are severely undermined. One is falling in. It's on Instagram and on the Hub, and it is a severe public hazard. The lifeguards responded right away, did the best they could, put a sign, taped it off. City is alerted. Thank you, Councilmember Wire, and the agency states alerted. There is a lot of action going on, but I just wanted to let you know, it is -- it's a disaster. So, stay informed by, you know, if you want, let me know or other people in the community know, but yeah, we have a major disaster that's happening, and the big swell is already hitting, and it's going to continue. So, that's my community concern. Thank our elected officials and agencies for stepping up. So, thanks.
Thanks, Denise. Appreciate it. Any other board member that had a community concern they wanted to share tonight?
Yes. This is working high. Yeah, my concern -- do I have to put --
Hi there. Charlene here, community member now. My concern is that, you know, there was another tragic accident today, and I live right there, and when you look at all, like you said, whether it's a bicycle or a person, you know, we have no side of the road. And she's right, sometimes it's six inches wide, sometimes it's two feet wide. And I think that there's a problem when you get towards Waimea from Three Tables. They took down a bunch of guardrails and rebuilt some guardrails, and then I heard they didn't extend the guardrails farther because the guy quit or something, and because so many people walk along the Ma'aka side, the Ma'akai side, going to Waimea. It's so narrow and so dangerous. It's already happened, and I'm just thinking it's going to be more happening as people walk. So, that's my concern, is that they've got to do something, build more guardrails so they can walk on the other side of it more. I mean, it starts way farther down than it needs to. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlene. Okay, we're going to keep moving forward so we can get to the key items on our agenda tonight, but I will take that on, put that on my list regarding e-bikes and traffic and things like that. So, thank you, everybody who's brought that up tonight. So, the first thing on our agenda, at our last board meeting in July, the board formed what we call a permitted interaction group to look at the different driveways along Ka'akona Hua Road in Kamehameha, because a bunch of us have gotten complaints about, you know, unsafe in-and-out access. So, my very brief report is that I made contact with probably the one of them that most people have a concern about, which is the ag farm, because the gravel gets washed away, and then when it rains, it gets very puddly. So, I'm going to be meeting with the gentleman that he actually is aware of the problem. They want to get it fixed, so we're going to meet them. And Councilmember Wire will probably have to -- not probably have to, will ask you to join us or have someone from your team join us because it may require some additional city resources. So, that's all I have to report on that. So, hopefully, we'll have more information at our next meeting. So, that's all I have on that one, unless anybody has any questions. Okay, moving on. At this point, I'm begging everybody, and I think we can get through this very quickly, but I'd like to flip-flop items B and C. I'd like to take up the development moratorium first because I think most of you are here for the ag moratorium, and what I want to be able to do is to spend as much time as we need on the ag moratorium. I'm not -- I'm not reso, I'm sorry. Reso, I apologize. I want to make sure we spend enough time on the ag reso. We're here till 9:30, so we will have at least a good hour, hour and a half to spend on that. If that's what we need to do, that's what we will do. So, if there's no objection from the board to flip-flop items B and C, is that okay, board members? Do I hear anything? Okay, so the first thing we have, and this came out of our last board meeting, a community member came up, and this, anyone who's come to our board meetings knows this, we have a lot of conversation around carrying capacity, traffic, many of the issues you've already heard tonight. And so, this community member said, hey, you know, we need to just kind of put a pause on everything right now. So, I went back, I put something together, got the help of a couple other folks, and we've come up with a reso that we would like to read into the record, and then we will have a discussion, and we can amend it as needed. My request to the board, though, is that when we make an -- I would prefer, and this will also go for the ag reso, is that we make the amendments before we make a motion, because remember, if we make the motion, then every amendment after that has to be motioned in second. It gets very complicated. So, it would be easier if we make all of our changes in advance and then make a motion to accept whatever the changes we be. So, just another thing for many of you who perhaps have not been to a board meeting in the past recently or at all, as you notice, you have two-minute time limit, and come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and you'll have two minutes to state your question or your concern or whatever it is that you'd want to share with us. So, again, we will make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak, and like I said, we've got two hours and a little bit extra tonight to do this. So, here we go. Okay, so we have this reso, and I apologize, I do not have any copies for this, but it is up on our Google Doc format, so if you want to go to honolulu.gov/nco and then go to North Shore Neighborhood Board, you can go to our Google Drive and take a look at it. So, I will read it, though, and I will not read it. I will go fairly slowly. "Moratorium on Development and New Commercial Beach and Park Activities Until the Updated North Shore Sustainable Communities Plan is Adopted by the City Council of the City and County of Honolulu and Signed by the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu. Whereas the North Shore community, as defined by the neighborhood plan, runs from Ka'ena Point in Mokulea to Wailei Park in Sunset, from Ma'aka to and including Doe Plantation, Po'amohua Camp, and next to the City and County of Honolulu Transfer Station up over on Ka'akona Hua, or actually, it's Wila'keena up there. And whereas the North Shore community is in a state of crisis due to continuously growing pressures of overcrowding from visitors and gridlocked vehicular traffic on the only highway access resulting in a severe degradation to the health, safety, well-being, and rural way of life of residents of the North Shore. And whereas there is grave concern that the residents And whereas there is grave concern that the residents of the North Shore Community may not have safe evacuation options or be able to heed a request to evacuate due to an emergency including tsunami, hurricane flooding, heavy rains, and heavy winds due to the overcrowded shoreline areas and congested traffic conditions that currently exist and lack of options for egress to safety zones and disaster resilient services. And whereas the North Shore is considered one of the prime recreational areas for the island of Oahu. And whereas the North Shore Neighborhood Board has often heard and expressed concerns about overdevelopment and overtourism in our North Shore Community. And whereas it has been expressed many times that our residents, elected leaders, and government entities need to discuss and study and act to the carrying capacity of our community. And whereas it has been expressed many times that we need to better manage our natural resources and the impacts that tourism and residents have on these resources. And whereas it has been expressed many times that our prime agricultural lands are being sold to new, often non-local owners and used for non-agricultural purposes, threatening our food security, and that ag CPRs are an out-of-control land use scheme that is defrauding owners and undermining real agricultural productivity. And whereas it has been expressed many times that there are many flagrant and obvious zoning violations, they're not being dealt with or enforced properly. And whereas it has been expressed many times that we need to better manage tourism impacts in our community, including illegal commercial activities at our beaches and degradation too, and harassment of our precious marine life and habitat areas. And whereas the North Shore has experienced severe hotspots of coastal erosion due to climate change, sea level rise, more unpredictable surf and storm surge, and flanking due to artificial and illegal erosion control measures by beachfront homeowners. Whereas many areas of the North Shore are in the special management area, but the City Department of Planning and Permitting has not adequately enforced the SMA requirements, among other land use and building codes resulting in unsustainable development and illegal activities that harm the community. Whereas the North Shore is host to many events, including surf contests, concerts, holiday art festivals. And whereas it has been expressed many times that we need to solve the problem of illegal short-term vacation rentals and unmanaged parking issues in our community. And whereas it has been expressed many times that there is concern that emergency vehicles cannot get through the traffic congestion that now appears on a daily basis and is exponentially worse during certain times of high visitor counts. And whereas the City and County of Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting has been working with the Community Planning Advisory Committee on update to the 2011 North Shore Sustainable Communities Plan for the past three years. And whereas the substantial changes in the environment community and visitor impacts, the updated North Shore Sustainable Communities Plan will be a reflection of current community sentiment regarding development and visitor impacts to our community compared to the current plan, which is over 13 years old. And whereas the North Shore Sustainable Community Plan is expected to come before the community for review in the fourth quarter of 2024. And whereas the North Shore Sustainable Community Plan will then be updated and brought before the North Shore Neighborhood Board for review and subsequent approval. And whereas the North Shore Sustainable Communities Plan will then go before the City Council of the City and County of Honolulu for three council meetings, including a public hearing and two committee meetings at the Planning and Economic Committee. And whereas the North Shore Sustainable Community Plan is expected to be approved by the City Council of the City and County of Honolulu. And whereas the North Shore Sustainable Communities Plan is expected to be signed by the mayor and become part of the land use ordinance. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the North Shore Neighborhood Board Number 27 respectfully requests that the city impose a moratorium on all residential, commercial, and agricultural development and permits for commercial beach activity in the area under the updated, under the updated North Shore Sustainable Communities Plan until the updated plan becomes part of the land use ordinance. The moratorium shall not apply to owner-occupied remodeling or rebuilding of single-family homes on non-coastal parcels or the replacement of cesspools with septic tanks. Be it resolved, that the North Shore Neighborhood Board Number 27 calls on the mayor, the city council, the governor, and the legislature to assist our community to work with the Department of Planning and Permitting on the community engagement process for the updated the North Shore Sustainable Community Plan, to assist DPP to effectuate a robust land use and building code enforcement program, to support DPP in full enforcement of the ban on illegal short-term rentals, to develop a comprehensive visitor parking and shuttle plan that will reduce visitor traffic, to provide input to the currently proposed revisions to the land use ordinance regarding activities on agriculturally-zoned land, to work with entities like HTA and DLNR to determine and enforce carrying capacity for sensitive cultural, environmental areas in our community, and work with the City Park, Department of Parks and Recreation on enforcing the limits on commercial activities at our beaches. So what this basically says is, until our plan is adopted, we just want to put a pause on everything, because we constantly hear how people are feeling pressure, and we saw that, we've heard it tonight already. So I will now open it up to board members, and then we will take comments from the community. So board members, I will start with Mark. Any comments or questions?
Oh, that's right, you were.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, forget Mark, go to Zach.
Well, actually, if he reduces help, he can't even participate in this conversation. Those are the rules.
No, that's the rules, that is the community's, that is the neighborhood plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, thank you, Zach. Go ahead, Zach.
I've never heard a resolution that's inclusive. That's amazing. Some people say if you want to get something done, try and do it one thing at a time. If we can pull this off, it'll be a miracle.
I think a big issue with the development stuff is they're basically doing another kunia farm lots. A lot of the things they're doing on the ag land and the CPRs is not legal, they're not permitting anything, so picking, I like where the resolution is, what it's saying, but I think it goes deeper into enforcement. We're not enforcing the rules as they stand, we're allowing people to build illegal homes, we know they're homes, they're building them, and because they're not permitting them and nobody's doing anything about it, they're going to continue doing it. So until we have enforcement of the illegal vacation rentals, which, you know, I hate to be this way, but try to call DPP and talk about it. They don't give a rat's behind. Full disclosure, I used to live near one about four years ago, I called on them constantly, nothing was done. They said, oh, well, North Shore's really far, so yeah, good luck, basically. But yeah, so I think that enforcement, it comes back down to enforcement. The e-bike thing, enforcement, I know we're not on that right now, but same thing with the building, enforcement, enforcement's already on the books.
I think the second resolution, the last paragraph in that, is, really sums up a lot of the concerns and comments. I saw a lot of people nodding their heads to that one. I think that enforcement is really important, I think getting additional support. I think the North Shore carries a much, much higher load of tourists than we have the infrastructure to handle. This has been this way for years and years and years. I would be supportive of a resolution that talks about that and the items that are included in that final paragraph. As Bob said, this is very broad. The definitions of what would be considered development, the fact that it includes a moratorium on residential development, it allows remodels and rebuilding, but doesn't allow residential actual development. What does it mean to place a moratorium on agricultural development? It's just so broad, I would not support that clause as it stands. I would also recommend striking the eighth whereas clause, talking about CPRs and ag land, because I think that seems out of place with the broader resolution. We do have another resolution on the docket today to specifically discuss agricultural lands, I would not recommend including either of those, but I think that the very last section has a lot of things that I think most folks are pretty supportive of. The very last paragraph, the second actual resolution, be it resolved, that calls on the mayor, city, and then lists out those seven items. I wonder if we could talk more about those seven items and come to agreement on those seven items.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. There was a whole lot to swallow, so I'm going to hold off on an opinion right now in terms of voting for it, but I would like to study it more.
Well, I did send it to you.
I know, I know, but I need to process it better. But the other thing is, is that, what do we do with people who already have permits? And I've even gotten calls where DPP is not approving septic anymore, they've stopped. So we have, where we cannot use cesspools, and we don't have sewage, so what are we supposed to do? And so there's a whole big issue in my mind with DPP and planning, and I don't know what these guys are doing, but it's gotten worse over the years. So I'd like to examine that further also.
Thank you, Mike. Denise?
Okay, three points. One, this is a resolution, we are not lawmakers, so I want to approach it. It's a cry for help from this community to the agencies, and so I don't think we need to wordsmith it or worry too much about definitions. It's a resolution that expresses the intent and spirit of our community, so that's the first point. The second one is, the reason it's so comprehensive, which I like, is because we have had years and years and years and years of cumulative complaints in this community without sufficient response. So what are we going to do about it? This says, we need help, we need attention, we're serious about it. The third thing I would say, putting on my lawyer hat, is there is precedent, City of Lake Tahoe, where a moratorium was placed on development while City of Lake Tahoe was doing their plan. So what's, I think, I can totally support this resolution, because it says, give us a chance to get our new plan out the door, rather than relying on a 13-year-old plan. I was on the, whatever we call it, the CPAC, along with some other people. It's going to come out, we'll have a chance to review it, and in the meantime, we shouldn't be pushing projects through on a 13-year-old plan that this community is no longer, I don't think we'll be supportive of. So I support the resolution, cry for help from the North Shore.
I absolutely love it. The intent, again, and with all respect to Erica's comments, I completely understand and respect that, but we've had great success with the new leadership at DPP, but I think there needs to be more than that, because there obviously needs to be more support to them as well. We're pushing them and begging them to enforce, but they're still having to process things as they come about. All this is, is just pressing pause and saying, let's get a grip, kind of like when, you know, the kids are doing too much in the room and you say, hold off, what were you doing first? So just pressing pause for a moment and being able to say, this is what we're going to do before the plan comes out. Once the plan is set, then we can work off of what is now put into place. But I cannot express more, like Denise just said, how many people call us on a daily basis with the same complaints of what this resolution is trying to uphold and protect what we have? Let's get a grip on what we have now, handle the enforcement, be able to focus on the enforcement, and then we can move forward. I don't believe, and I know I heard this in here, that there is, it does not include existing homeowners and existing structures that are going through a renovation or a fix, or if you already have a permit, this is ultimately for new builds, so that we can take the time to examine the resources and in the location that those homes would go into. So with that, I absolutely support this resolution.
Thank you very much. Lee Fanderson?
Thank you. I agree with pretty much everything that's been said. I, I think the resolution is a good, I like the pause button, because we need it, I've been thinking about that for a long time, too. The other thing is, along with this, I think we really need to push the DPP or whoever it is to get some enforcement, because, you know, like Denise said, you call, nothing happens, you call, nothing happens. What are they there for? So we really need to get enforcement. These guys are building buildings, and you call up DPP and, hey, there's a house going up over here, okay, that's the end of it. So we need to do the pause button and try and get some more enforcement for DPP.
Charlene? Hi, yes, I really do agree with the intent of this resolution, and yes, you've put in a lot of broad definitions, but that's because you've got to cover every little thing, because then something will slip through. And I know the sustainability plan was supposed to be out, you know, in January and February, and it's been delayed, it was supposed to be then in July, and it's still delayed. So I guess better now than, than not at all. It's just, like she said, it's just a pause button, this does not mean, because the sustainability plan is the guideline, it really is, and people have been working on it, and it's good for 10 years, but this has been going on for 13 years with the old one. It's supposed to be every 10 years, you get a new one, so this has been kind of lapsing. And in those three years, and those 13 years, everything has proliferated, and there is no enforcement, I can absolutely say that should be true. And that's what we need, we need enforcement, and we need a pause. It's just a pause, it's not like you're never going to get to develop again, it's just a pause for now, and I appreciate that. Yes?
I'm in, I'm all in with pause.
But what's going to happen to the potential revenue and income stream from abroad, and the foreign investments and development that we could potentially have here? And the economic stability and a boost to economy for our future generations, what's going to happen? Obviously, that's not my sentiment. Mahalo to this resolution, I agree and support it.
We all know you very well, Marcus, so that's why none of us were too worried. Okay, please, come up to the microphone, you will have two minutes to say your piece if you wish, if you don't, that's okay. So I'm going to now turn it over, you've heard from the board members, so I want now, community, please, sir, please, Paul, come on up. Thank you, sir, and I will be timing you two minutes, thank you.
Then I'll try and keep it to two minutes. My name is Paul, and I have a, I'm one of the CPR ag victims. Your whereas says that we have an interest in supporting the defrauding of these buyers, I completely agree. And that another whereas was that you were interested in local food production, I completely agree. Okay? I think the resolution on moratorium defeats those two goals. Number one, the moratorium will give the developers a perfectly good excuse to go, I can't do anything, there's a moratorium, my hands are tied, screwing the buyers even further. And as an owner with an ag lot, if I don't know what's going to be happening, because how long is this moratorium going to last? What can I do? What can I, that uncertainty is going to make me hesitate to spend money on labor and equipment and tools and food, to grow food. So I think those two paragraphs could be pulled out and put into the, into the ag part stuff. And with respect to the CPRs and the resolution on, for the land use, I would love to sit with y'all and talk about that, because I've got half an hour to talk to you about those things and not two minutes. Thank you.
Well, actually, do us a favor, give us your phone number before you leave tonight, and we would absolutely love to have that conversation with you, so thank you for doing that.
I am the treasurer and board member for one of the few projects that actually has a CPR. So we're not in, we're past the stage of these, what is it called, I can't remember the name of it now, it's the Tenants in Common Agreement.
Oh, good for you.
That are sketchy, big time, yes.
Thank you, Paul, we really appreciate that, but please make sure I get your number before you leave tonight. So, yes, Larry?
I would really like to extend my deepest gratitude and thanks to the people that put in a tremendous amount of work, that's obvious in this resolution, and I appreciate the supportive comments. There's, there's, you know, it's easy to find fault and pick a document like this apart and spend endless hours wordsmithing it, trying to get it perfect. I don't, I think that's a waste of time. These, these folks have thought this through pretty well. It's not perfect, but I'll tell you what is not perfect, what's really not perfect is the status quo. It's totally unacceptable, the traffic. You folks know what happened today? The erosion, houses falling into the ocean, the illegal rentals, not acceptable, status quo is not acceptable, do something, and you have a beautiful document to start with. Thank you, folks, for doing that.
Thank you, Larry. Darrell?
Good evening, my name's Darrell Whitaker, I'm the executive director at Camp Mokalea. And the intent, I fully support, I just have a couple of concerns or questions about the length of the moratorium. We have three cabin buildings at our camp facility that are in dire, dire need of renovation, and if they aren't renovated soon, it will really hamper our ability to continue as a nonprofit ministry serving the North Shore. We've had a building permit in for the renovation for about a year and a half, and we're getting really close to the end of it, and so we've gone through, we've tried to do everything by the book, and gone through all the permitting processes and all of the different things that have been required. And so the idea of a moratorium, not knowing how long that might last, is very frightening to us. We've spent well over $100,000 going through the process of getting everything done, and now the thought of that all being put on hold is a little frightening from a nonprofit, so.
We appreciate your comments, Darrell. Just so everybody knows, too, we're only advisory, as Denise pointed out, a resolution does not have the force of law, we're only advisory. This is, as Denise pointed out, is a cry for help more than anything else, and just to get it into the hands of the people. For example, for me, I think, for me personally, if I may take a minute, this isn't about you. you. It's not about you. This is about the fact that we've got a project coming before the board next month that wants to put 30,000 square feet of commercial space in Haleiwa along with, what? How many units, Denise? 150 units. This is what this is about. That's gonna kill Haleiwa. So, this is what we're talking about. This is about Turtle Bay. This is about, you know, people coming in and wanting to put big developments up and people who are just building willy-nilly without permits. So, I just wanna make that really clear. And if there are some suggestions for clarifying, I, we're open. You know, we're absolutely open. So thank you, Darrell.
Can I say, follow up with that? Again, I fully agree with the intent of it. I just want, some of us may get caught up in that, that are really trying to do the right thing and get punished for that. And I'll respond to, someone said something about that it would not affect renovation and those kinda permitting kinda things. But we recently found out that ours is now being considered development because the code requires us to update the time of foundation. We're not, we're just renovating, not changing the footprint or anything. But because we're having to change the foundational wall, then now we are considered development. So if it is development, that would catch us up in it, so.
Okay. Casey, you wanna use the microphone? Go ahead.
Just to clarify that the exception for renovations and remodeling was for non-coastal. And I believe Camp Mokalea is coastal, so you would not be getting that exception as currently drafted.
That's, that's why, that's why he was bringing that up. Yes, exactly. Exactly. Any other comments regarding the North Shore moratorium on development? Board members, we've heard some good comments from the community so far. Earl, and then that gentleman in the yellow shirt. Go ahead, Earl.
People, I came here tonight because I heard about Turtle Bay where they wanna build. And I was like, "It doesn't bother me." But then I sat down and I thought about it, it bothers me a heck of a lot. The reason for that is Turtle Bay is here for one reason: making money. That is what they're here for. They don't give a damn about us. Okay, my theory, before they do any building, tell them to put a four-lane highway running from Kahuku all the way to Haleiwa. It would eliminate the darn traffic and everything else. I mean, look what happened to Whanai. Whanai had a two-lane going all the way from Makaha all the way through. Now, they got a five, six-lane highway going through because their community fought for it. To put the new roads in before they put buildings. Build your foundation first, which is your streets. Build all that up first and all that, then down the road, if you can manage it, you have Turtle Bay coming in saying their piece. Right now, to have Turtle Bay come in and do their building, heck, no. It should not happen until you fix the roads and everything else. Because, again, on a weekend, a fire truck, an ambulance, an officer cannot get through the highway right now. Imagine up the road when they put this hotel with a lot more traffic in it. People, people are dying out here on North Shore for, get help. It takes a heck of a, what used to take five minutes, it takes there 20 minutes. And you know what? Within their last 15 minutes, the poor individual can die. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Sir? Thank you.
Hey, how's it? So, I'm Mike Mitchell, and I worked carpenter 42 years. I work every day. I get up early, I come home late. I own one of those properties out there, and we wanna subdivide. And I wanna live out there on my property. You know what I mean? I wanna farm my property, and I wanna live there. But you guys blanket moratorium stuff is too much, bro. That thing is, we invested, I invested every penny I got. Okay? So it's too broad. You guys gotta think about the other people, too. You know, we got properties out there we need to protect. We got guys out there breaking in our stuff, stealing our stuff, stealing our fruit, breaking in our containers, stealing our equipment, every day. Where's the police? We don't even have an address. You can't even call them and tell them what address we stay. You know what I mean? And then these other guys, these farmers that live out there on these properties, they get actual home invasions happening out there, and they won't report. They're not gonna report because they scared they're gonna get deported or something. You know? It's a serious thing. They got, there's action out there. So, you know, I, I think your, your moratorium, you know, I get it, but it's so broad. It's, it's so broad. It's, it's, I listened to you mention, like, everything. It's like, okay, stop everything. That's, that, not gonna happen. Not gonna happen. But we gotta, you know.
Are you at Mojiko, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're trying, and we've invested everything we had years ago on this thing, and we still waiting, you know? We're trying to do everything the right way. But, you know, if, if something doesn't happen, you're gonna end up with a gigantic homeless community out there. I'm telling you right now, if you don't allow it to go forward, you looking at Whanai Harbor.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Lenell.
You know, as a resident born and raised here in Kahuku, a lot of us has observed this monster that just keeps building and building and building. To what end? No space on the beach, stepping over people's heads just to get to the reef. This resolution, again, remember, it's the intent. We need this breath of air. It is just too wild, too crazy, people taking advantage. And we, the local residents, are expected to just eat it up all the time. People with deep pockets coming here, wanting to capitalize even more on their tourist bucks, and people that wanna come and live in Hawaii, there's got to be a line drawn. We cannot continue this way and expect our children, our grandchildren, and for me, my great-grandchildren to be able to live here. You know, so this has been a long time in the coming of it. So, we need to give this resolution a chance, because we need to give ourselves a chance for the, this generation, my generation, I've got five generations that's still living here on the islands. And it is, you know, my grandkids are gonna move to the mainland. It's too crowded. There are so many issues, and yes, it is everything, because it is everything. That's the bottom line. Every aspect of our lives are affected by everything.
Thanks, Lenell. Thank you very much. Appreciate. Dave.
Thanks, Kathleen. This thing has a huge litany of real problems that we're facing. And, you know, they, all of these speakers have amplified that. My one worry, I disagree with somebody who said it doesn't matter about the details. It really does, because this entire litany of problems that we have, I'm not really sure who it affects. There's coastal communities and non-coastal communities, and I didn't really understand who's under that. Maybe you could clarify it with me. And of course, you know, what I'm really worried about is the law of unintended consequences. And, you know, I have a project to restore Mill Camp. How is that affected? And it, it's not for tourists. I'm doing it to try and help us. But is this gonna get caught up in that? I'm not sure. So that, that's my only concern, that it is very broad and it lacks specificity, and I'm worried that we're taking a little bit too much of a shotgun approach.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate your comment. Okay, board members, what I wanted to see is take a temperature check and see if there are changes you wanna make based on the comments that we have heard, and some of the comments, yes, Casey.
I would, I don't know if anyone, I already stated mine, but I would have two amendments that I would recommend.
Go ahead. We haven't made a motion, so it's okay. Just go ahead, make your.
Okay. The, the first amendment being, in order to more directly tailor the moratorium to what we believe are the primary problems, can we switch it to moratorium on commercial and resort development and permits for commercial beach activity? That would mean dropping residential, or we could specify homeowner residential and would drop agricultural from that as well, but focus on commercial resort, commercial beach activities. That would be the first. And the second one, as I previously stated, would be to drop the CPR clause, because I believe that from everything else, that reads to be out of context, and I think we can address it in the ag resolution.
Okay. Okay, great. Yes, Paul.
Thank you. After hearing the testimony, I totally agree with Earl and with Mike. You know, we have to think of, we have lost 62,000 residents since 2020. That's crazy, because we don't have the infrastructure or the people to build it. And, you know, this resolution, it doesn't make difference. It takes five to 10 years for the bloody DPP to approve a closing permit. It's crazy. And people wanna work. It's good for people to work. And if we start taking away all these jobs, where are you gonna work? You know, because they're advertising now, we have a huge amount of people going into the construction phase. So, based on what I heard tonight, and I wanna look at it further, I would not be in favor of approving the resolution.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. Go ahead, Sash.
Aloha. Yeah, right now, I can't support this, 'cause it needs, I need more information, and it's too broad. It's gonna hurt the local people. My kids, my grandkids, there's a housing shortage. They need homes. Where are they gonna go? They're gonna go mainland? I think another thing we need to look at is, you know, like what Senator O'Neal was trying to do, is trying to prevent foreigners from buying land. And I think that's part of the problem, is, you know, $5 million homes, $10 million, my kids can't afford that. So right now, what they gotta look is ag land, maybe, you know, buying ag land, that's the cheapest thing they can do, and subdivide and build single homes. Let's say we exempt single homes, adding square footage, because that's what people need to do. Their kids can't buy homes, so they're staying home with mom and dad and need to add square footage. From Camp Mokalea, he has commercial property on coastal, but he just wants to renovate and improve his lots, and that would affect him, too, so I'm against that also.
Thank you, Sash. Appreciate your comments. Rickell, did you have another comment? Thank you.
I actually agree with Sash on that Mokalea situation. I think there's room to look at existing projects that are already in motion. I think when we originally discussed this, it was also not to impede anyone that was already in their process. But I'm gonna remind everybody, yeah? These illegal CPR deals and all these ag land deals, they're being built on illegally, and you're not getting that housing anyway. They're being sold where our kids can't afford, afford them. They can't even use the land to cultivate crop or whatever, 'cause it's not really ag land anymore. They're ranch homes. The idea of this is to get a grip on what we have out there. Yes. I have land that I will fight tooth and nail to make sure my kids get. I bought it knowing what I bought and complied with that purchase. There's too much buying going on, and not by any of us, by people from outside. And I agree with that whole concept of no foreign buyers, but it's just not realistic. It's too much of a fight. Instead, why are we not creating a stronger criteria for outside buyers? Make it so hard that it's almost impossible. There's other avenues to attack this. But again, this resolution is intended to just be a pause, so we can get a grip on what's impeding us now. 'Cause right now, none of our kids is gonna buy here, and they're certainly not gonna be buying ag land pretty soon. So again, just please keep the thought of what the intent is to just press pause. I do entertain chair amendments to recognize Camp Mokalea's situation in existing, and even Sash's comment to families of existing structures who are working towards extending a room or something like that. I think there's room for that.
Great, thank you. And then Blake just joined us. So Blake, did you have some comments on this? We're talking about the North Shore Development Moratorium. Did you wanna address that?
I support the comments that, remember, Achu just made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So what I'd like to, oh, did you have another comment? Okay.
No, I, no. You know, everybody's saying good stuff, like Chair Sushu said. It's a pause. We're not stopping nothing. We're just putting the brakes on, wait till the red light goes away. The other thing that was mentioned, I am 100% for saying that as of January 1st, nobody can buy property here. If you're not a resident, you don't buy land here until you've lived here for 10 years. Stop everything, because the parking lot is full. You know, we keep letting these guys go, and the only people that are making anything on this is a state and a county. Us guys is sucking wind. We cannot afford to buy it, but these other guys can. So when we move out, we're gonna move to Arizona, somebody's gonna buy our property. The, the state is gonna make a lot of money off of the taxes that they're gonna get from the people that are taking our land that we've been on for over 100 years. You know, if my grandchildren and great-grandchildren hopefully will stay on the land that my grandfather picked up, would be nice. But in reality, it's very scary, because I don't think it's gonna happen. So, we need to do something, put the brakes on, wait till the red light goes away, and then do something right, stop this influx of rich people.
Thanks, Leigh. I would like to make a recommendation, if I could. We heard some great comments tonight. Thank you to the community and to the fellow board members. And I'd like to say that, you know, take what we've heard tonight and go back and take a look at this reso again and massage it. A dear friend of mine who's to come, and many of you will remember, Stu Ring, he passed away a couple of years ago. Stu's mantra was, "Do it right, don't do it fast." So if we're gonna do something right, better to do it right than to try and shut something through. And we got some good feedback here tonight from everybody. And so I would like to ask the board's permission to defer this to a future board meeting and work on this and take in some of the comments that we've heard tonight and see what we can do to address some very valid points that were brought up. And our intent here isn't to hurt people. Our intent, as we said, to press that pause button, which we so desperately need. And as I outlined, there are projects coming before this board that I think this can help us with. And it's not, you know, the average person. It's, as Leigh and, and Sash and other people have put out there tonight, it's the, the big, big developers that wanna come in and do this. So, board members, yes, Denise, and then Bob, I, sorry, Bob.
So I was gonna make the motion.
To not, do we need a motion to defer?
To defer until a date?
No, any objections?
Okay, great. No objection.
Uh, Bob.
So I think what I just heard is you're not entertaining a motion with regard to your request. The other thing I wanted to say is, while we're talking about putting the brakes on, there's a lot of effort from the people in Waikiki, HDA, Tourism Association. Those guys are always looking for more. You know, the staff wants to make more money, they want to charge more for the beds. And I read a Herald report the other day that said, you know, we're in the nine, nine million a year, and for the next two years, they see it increasing over 10 million. And we don't have the infrastructure for it. And tourism in and of itself isn't a bad business, but if you, if you're not prepared to take care of them... care of them, you know, everybody suffers. My big bugboos is, I think parks are really important, that's where people spend their prime time, and there's no parking at the parks, a lot of them. So I, this is kind of a roundabout, but I really think our legislators need to pony up some money for more infrastructure. I want to know why we only have three marine life conservation districts on this island. You know, if we had more of those, those would be win-win-win for the fish and just about everybody involved. And there's always people who'll say, yeah, well, I don't like the idea. And fine, we're supposed to be a democracy where a majority prevails. Anyway, that's my humbug. There you go.
Thank you, Uncle Bob. Leaf, one final, okay, then Maka, one final comment.
I'll give Uncle Leaf the final comment.
Okay.
Bouncing off of the Ba-humbug, mahalo, sir. Because yes, we do live in a democ, yeah, we do, yeah. But the concept sometimes, right, the traditional concept that we like to look back at and reflect on is kapu. The Marine Conservation District that you're talking about, in essence, is a kapu. And this pause, this moratorium, allows us to reflect on the kapu of our aina, of our And so mahalo for the discussion, mahalo for the conversations. I guess it works when we want it to work, and it doesn't work for us when it doesn't work for us. So when kapu works for us, it'll be there. But also know that kapu is always there.
Thank you, thank you, Maka. Okay, Uncle Leaf, take us home.
I just wanted to say, if you, everybody can remember when, what was it, 2000? When COVID hit, everything went stop, that's what we're doing. You know? We just need to take a breath. When COVID went stop, everything went stop, everybody could kind of relax, nothing moved, everything, that's all we got to do, reset.
So thank you, everybody, tonight for all your comments. So what we're going to do is we're going to defer this to a future board meeting. I want to make sure we get, and community, please, this isn't the end of the comments. So if you've got comments, email me, and come up after the meeting, I'll give you my card, because we want to make this work for as many people as we can. We can't make everybody happy, but we want to make as many people happy as we can. And we heard some really excellent feedback tonight, and that's why you start broad, you never want to start small and go big, you want to go big and then maybe whittle here and there. That's how you get compromised, and that's how you move things forward. So thank you very much. Yes, Uncle Earl, real quick, my friend.
Yeah, real quick. One minute. This was the beginning of being to a hell of a long. You guys are all on the right page. Damn good job, keep it up.
Coming from you, that's high praise, Uncle Earl. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, so at this point, what I'll do is, we'll go back, we'll take all the comments, we'll rework this, and we'll bring this back. My guess is it's probably not going to come back until probably January. I think that'll be okay with everybody, because again, we want to get this right, and we want to make it as, make it as good for everybody as we possibly can. So we got some great feedback, so I really appreciate that tonight. So thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on to the next item of business, we have our Agricultural Committee Resolution for Bill 64. So our ag committee took up only that section and took a look at it. And so I'm going to ask the committee chair, Raquel Achu, to say a few words, and then I believe she's going to turn it over to vice chair of the ag committee, Casey Alexander. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So we did take a section of Bill 64 about, in August, and went through some of the points there, and have come up with some recommendations, three recommendations that we would like to present and gain support to submit to council. My vice chair, Casey Alexander, did a stellar job, putting everything together, doing the research, bringing people together. And so I'm going to allow, have her take this time to explain the amendments that we came up with.
And Casey, you do have a few copies? Okay. I'm sorry, guys, we're going to have to share. I apologize. Okay, thank you. The board members should all have their own copy, because I did email it to you guys. Thank you.
Go ahead, Casey.
Now that we're all warmed up, as Raquel said, thank you very much, Raquel. As in Agriculture Committee, we discussed all sections of the draft, Bill 64, which is the very, very large, comprehensive land use ordinance revision draft. We reviewed all sections related to agriculture and captured comments. If you're interested, there is a Google Doc available to the community that captures the comments that everybody made as we went through each section. But then the committee voted to pick three topics that were most important to the committee members to include in the draft resolution. Are you, oh, sorry, it's a four-page. I should have clarified. Everybody gets a piece. If you all huddle together, you can read it.
You're going to have to read it, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I will read the resolution. I will read the resolution, but there are a couple of points. One, there are a lot of things. My bad, sorry, Kathleen.
You're going to have to read it, I'm sorry.
I will, I will read it. I printed copies for each of the board member tables, but not for the full audience. Okay, I will read the resolution, but just for clarification, there's a lot in Bill 64, there's a lot in Bill 64. There's a lot in Bill 64 related to agricultural uses and agricultural lands. I encourage all of you to read it. I encourage all of you to submit testimony, because it really impacts the community of the North Shore. The first hearing was August 22nd, the second hearing is this Thursday from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Capitol. You can still submit testament, yes, sorry, thank you. You can still submit testimony. So what this is, is not intended to be the comprehensive, everything that we could potentially say about even the agricultural portions of Bill 64. It's intended to be three of the biggest topics so that we could come to resolution and submit something together as a board. But everybody can submit their own testimony as well. If you have organizations, you can submit testimony with those organizations. So with that framing, the resolution itself is one-page preamble of sentiments framing the comments that are the actual recommended amendments to the bill. And then there are three pages of recommended amendments to the bill, listed as an attachment. So I don't know if we need to approve those sort of separately, but.
I would, that's the quote.
I'm going to read, okay. So, "North Shore Neighborhood Board Agriculture Committee Resolution on the Promotion of a Regulatory Environment That Facilitates Rather Than Hinders Agricultural Production on Agricultural Lands. Whereas Hawaii currently imports 85% to 90% of food, which makes the state highly vulnerable to global supply chain disruptions, rising transportation costs, and other food security risks. And whereas local farms of all sizes are necessary to increase local agricultural production and enhance Hawaii's food security, self-sufficiency, and economic resilience. And whereas small and micro farms are critical contributors to Hawaii's agricultural landscape, enabling a diversity of agricultural products, supporting innovative and sustainable farming practices, reducing the barrier to entry for farmers who cannot afford large tracts of agricultural land in Hawaii, and preserving the traditions of our historically agricultural communities. And whereas regulations and standards imposed on agricultural zoned land by the city and county have a significant impact on the ability of small and micro farms to continue and expand efficient and sustainable agricultural production. And whereas standards drafted broadly with mixed-use communities or specific problematic instances in mind, without sufficient consultation with a representative sample of farmers, may inadvertently negatively impact the ability of farmers to continue or expand efficient and sustainable agricultural production on agricultural lands. And whereas the agricultural segments of Bill 64 have a significant impact on the community of the North Shore, considering the North Shore is home to a substantial portion of the city and county's agricultural lands, now therefore be it resolved that the North Shore Neighborhood Board affirms the importance of creating a regulatory environment that supports and enables rather than hinders agricultural production on Oahu's agricultural lands. Be it further resolved that the North Shore Neighborhood Board urges the council to thoughtfully consider this affirmation as the basis for discussing all draft uses, usage standards, and definitions relevant to agriculturally zoned lands proposed for inclusion in or exclusion from Bill 64. Be it further resolved that the North Shore Neighborhood Board urges the council to thoughtfully consider the attached recommended adjustments to three high-priority topics within draft Bill 64 of the North Shore Neighborhood Board Agriculture Committee. And be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to all members of the Honolulu City Council, the head of the Department of Planning and Permitting, the head of the Department of Agriculture, and to the mayor's office to advocate for regulatory actions that promote and enable agricultural production on Oahu's agricultural lands." So that is the resolution, but as I mentioned, it comes with a three-page attachment, and so I'm going to give the highlights of the three-page attachment. The three topics that the Agriculture Committee voted to discuss to include, these got so mixed up, my bad. The first topic is confined animal raising. The second topic was agritourism, and the third topic was farm dwellings. So those are the three topics covered. So for confined animal raising, and confined animal raising was already discussed in the August 22nd meeting, there were a couple amendments discussed, but clarifying the recommendation from the Agriculture Committee was to, so really quickly, the confined animal raising increased the setback required for confined animal raising where it borders residential or resort or mixed-use commercial zoning. So the recommendation one was to strike a proposed clause, actually, should I just read it?
Go for it.
The recommendation one was to strike a proposed clause due to unsuitable and overly general restriction of agricultural production on agricultural zoned lands, considering ag zoning two, so this was restricting, I don't have this copy, restricting, you can't have confined animal raising below three acres. We said that because ag zoning two allows for subdivision of land into two-acre parcels, it shouldn't be below that. Oahu is home to many non-conforming agricultural zoned lots under three acres, and farmers can raise and maintain a healthy population of livestock within confines on parcels well under three acres, depending on the breed and size of livestock and the conditions established by the partner, this, sorry, by the farmer. The second recommendation is to clarify that the setback requirements apply to structures where animals are housed a majority of the time, and that setbacks should be graduated based on the scale of animal production and size of the animal. This amendment includes the text as adjusted, would read, "Animal-raising confined standards. Structures where animals are housed a majority of the time must be set back from the property line of any adjoining property within the residential apartment or apartment-mixed-use zoning district on a graduated scale, depending on the scale of operations and size of the animal. Structures associated with commercial-scale large animal operations shall be set back a minimum of 300 feet, small-scale, large, or medium, setback 50 feet. Small-scale, small animal do not require a setback." That was the first recommendation. I think I can give the highlights of the other recommendations. On agritourism, the recommendations are related to the inability to measure the amount of activity or the percentage of activity taking place on a land, as opposed to the percentage of land used for an agricultural activity. The second recommendation was related to improvements to the land must be capable of removal without unreasonable cost or effort, because there is no definition of unreasonable cost or effort. Recommendation three was to, in all instances where usage is restricted to crop production and livestock keeping, to shift that to agricultural use or production, to make it inclusive of things like beekeeping and agricultural processing. Recommendation five was to allow for agricultural retail on agricultural lands, as is currently included in the current land use ordinance under Agribusiness, to include that clause, which was removed from the draft, to actually include it in the draft. And the third one, farm dwellings. Two, four recommendations for farm dwellings. The first was to strike the clause that requires farmers, in order for it to be a legal farm dwelling, the farmer still has to be actively farming, which impacts individuals who are either injured or retired. That individual would no longer be living in a legal farm dwelling. So that was the first recommendation, was to strike that clause. The second recommendation is to allow Ohana units associated with farm dwellings. There is additional language within the land use ordinance that allows Ohana units for all types of residential properties, but restricts them from farm dwellings, but considering the importance of families to farm operations. That was the second recommendation. The third recommendation is to adjust the definition. This is the third and fourth recommendation, is to adjust the definition of a farm dwelling, to be a dwelling unit that is accessory to agricultural use on the same lot. The definition in the draft says principal agricultural use, and creates an exception for open space forestry and boarding or care of animals. There were concern from committee members related to the potential impact of boarding of horses, food forests, and pasture land. I apologize that that was just such a quick overview of the actual recommendations. The resolution itself is the first page that I read, but open to discussion, comment, feedback on all elements.
As we did before, we'll start at this end and see what, Blake has no comments, Maka? No comments? Debbie? None. Sherilyn? None. Leaf? None. Raquel? None. Denise? Okay, Mike? Erica?
Yeah, so I was briefly looking at this, so that the animal setback thing, I mean, there's, I don't know if it's supposed to be this broad, but it doesn't say anything about, you know, it says, everything is just very broad. It's like, well, you know, depending on the size of the animal, and depending on how many animals, but there's no, like, numbers, like, you know, can my neighbor just have, like, you know, 10 horses, because they have whatever, and they can just run right up to the fence and make doo-doo, and, you know, I mean, I like horses, that doesn't bother me. So maybe it's a bad example. Pigs, there you go, because pigs are very smelly. I would, you know, obviously, I live in North Shore, but I bought in the middle of the neighborhood on purpose, not adjacent to ag land, but pig smell travels very extensively. And, yeah, so I guess that would be, my concern would be narrowing it down, like, are the things, like, the smell of the pig and the smell of the chicken feces going to be considered, not just the size of the chicken, but the noise and the, you know, different things like that. Like, I don't know if that's something you guys are addressing, but that would be my concern, is a neighbor somewhat near ag land, but not right up on it, downwind, if you will.
Okay. Casey, you want to address that?
The draft version places a 1,500-foot setback on confined The draft version places a 1,500-foot setback on confined animal raising. Regardless of the setup of confinement, regardless of the size of the animal, so this was an attempt to make it more specific to the specific animals. We could definitely refine that. So right now, it says, has large, medium-sized, large-sized, small-sized animal. It doesn't specifically call out pigs. I recognize piggeries are a different thing in and of themselves. And then small-scale, large-scale, large-scale commercial operations is how that, currently in our draft, the graduated setbacks, but very open to recommendations on.
What is, is there a definition of what is large-scale, what is small-scale? This, I am not a farmer, obviously.
The director may adopt rules following U.S. Department of Agriculture definitions to adapt requirements to the scale of operation, size of the animal for specific cases.
Well, thank you very much for that education.
It sounds like a pretty packed bill. I think the committee's done a really good job of scrutinizing the areas of particular interest. From my point of view, there's a lot of people who live in Pupukea, they'll live on one-acre lots, and it sounds like a lot of the things that you discussed wouldn't have very much bearing because of the offsets. A one-acre lot isn't looking at 1,500-foot offset for an animal pen or something. So, so what I'm really curious about is, as this bill moves forward, what would be the impacts on the people in Pupukea on one- and two-acre lots?
So the bill as currently drafted would prevent any confined animal raising in Pupukea, because as currently drafted, you cannot have confined animal raising below three acres. So that is one of the recommended adjustments. One of the biggest cases that we have for that recommended adjustment is farmers like Jay Ludovico, who have thousands of, who are essential to supporting poultry production for the North Shore and have thousands of chickens in a one-acre space, which is completely healthy and acceptable for chickens. So we don't want to include regulations that would cripple our existing farmers who are feeding the community. Reducing that requirement would mean that confined animal raising is allowed in Pupukea, but you would still have to follow setback requirements.
Sorry, I do have comments. So you're, you know, in the beginning, you're saying 85%, 90% of food is imported, and you're trying to promote farming and stuff, but what about people that want to raise 10 chickens in their small lot? What about people that want to have a cow, one cow? I grew up in Sunset, I had cows, horses, chickens. We slaughtered our own chickens. We were on, we weren't on three acres, we're in two acres, so. And right down the, right down, I'll say upwind from us was a pig farm, and then further down was another pig farm by Rocky Point. So, does it affect current farmers? When you say wind, wind swirls around. Kona winds, you've got trade winds. Right now, it's a little too broad.
What would you want it to? Are you saying we need to protect backyard farmers and homesteaders, or are you saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The setback is too much, 1,500.
Yes, so that is the amendment. The, if you look at chickens, would be small-scale, small-animal operations do not require a setback.
Mark, any comments? Okay, Mike's.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, what do I do with the quail? Three of those eggs give one chicken egg, but they're very clean, they're very neat, they pick up. And then, the easiest livestock to me, because you can clean it and eat it quickly. What about the rabbits? What are we going to do with them? They're easy to raise, they have a lot of offspring, they're small, you eat them by three months, and they just keep on going. So I agree with Sash, you know, the size of the livestock is important. And, you guys know where I live, so quail is easy, and rabbits are just almost as easy, if not easier. But we tend to forget the size of the livestock, and rabbits don't bark, quails don't cockadoodle do. So, you know, it's, you got to look at the animal, too. So I don't, I agree with Sash. I don't, I think we shouldn't have on small animals.
Casey, you want to address that?
We shouldn't have, sorry, what was the last sentence?
We shouldn't have that kind of criteria for all animals when we're only talking about small animals. And these small animals give a lot of production, protein, meat, whatever.
So you're supporting the amendment to?
Yeah. Right.
Yes, so the, mhm. I believe I misspoke earlier when I said 1,500 feet. That was for agricultural processing. We also had comments on agricultural processing is not, you shouldn't need a 1,500-foot setback to make jam. That was not one of the top three in our list, but it was a 500-foot setback for blanket animals. That differs from what last, the previous land use ordinance said. The previous land use ordinance had minor and major animal raising, and minor animal raising was defined as small animals. The amendment that we're proposing is to get closer to what it was previously. So there is no setback requirement for small-scale, small animals. That's what we are amending, so I think you're supporting that. Mhm. Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, community, we'll take comments from the community now. Again, two-minute time limit, we do time, so when I ask you to wrap it up, please wrap it up. Please come forward, state who you are, and make your two-minute comments. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Adam Lee, I live right down the street from my own kayak Bay. Great segue into the conversation, because this bill impacts more than everything. Bill 64, formerly called Bill 10, is something that died a long time ago. It died a death because it had no support. Nobody knows who wrote it, nobody wants to take responsibility for it, they just want to say, here it is, read it, it's the new Bible, we have no redline version, we're not going to tell you what we changed, added, edited. We're not going to tell you what the different definitions are called, we're going to delete Article 10, and we're going to replace it with this whole new thing. It's a big smoke and mirrors game, and it impacts this community the most, the North Shore. Of course, other communities have ag lands, but it's this Neighborhood Board that actually has the kuliara to share with Mr. Wire how you guys feel about it. So if you say, sounds good to me, he has no pressure to make any changes. And I want to just break it down to you, okay? Because I have experience in land use ordinance. I'm one of the few people on the whole island who knows Master Table 21-3 inside out. This is the Bible. This is what we use to see what's permitted, what's conditionally permitted, minor, major, everything. What they want to do with Bill 64, to throw the smoke and mirrors up, is to completely replace it with a whole new master chart that doesn't even reference the old one. So unless you're so ambitious that you're going to look line by line and say, what was changed, what was added, edited, renamed, whatever you want to say it, even if you spent three years on the bill, which is what we've been doing, been going in circles for three years, because even if you spent a whole time, you'll never understand the bill truly, because it's not structured in a way.
Thank you.
Every time they change the land, hold on. Every time they change the land use ordinance, they redline it.
Adam, everybody has been very polite.
This is the only time they're not redlining it, and I'll tell you why, because they want to add vacation cabins, one vacation cabin per acre is in this.
We'll call this meeting back to order. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, can we get more comments, please? Anybody else has comments? Please don't be shy, obviously. Come on up, Paul, thank you.
I'll bend down. I can't get it to move. I would have a whole lot to say about, thank you, brother, about the farm dwelling relative to their, the current acceptable style. I mean, one thing that I keep hearing is, we don't want gentleman estates on these ag two-acre lots. Currently, you're allowed to put a farm dwelling on a 5,000-square-foot footprint. That's crazy. That's huge. I mean, you could build a 25-foot-high, two-story house, put 10,000 square feet on an acre. That's, that's not a farm dwelling, that's a mansion. That's what's got to change. I mean, there's, there's something we can really make an impact. And if you're currently farming, what do you need? You need, you need a, you need a place to get out of the weather, you need to be cool in the summer and warm in the winter, and a place to use the bathroom. You know what I mean? That's a farm dwelling, not a swimming pool and, you know, marble. So, you know, there's a lot of room in there to make additions to the changes in those specifications for farm dwellings, and when and how you can build them, too. So I would love to sit with that committee and go for more than two minutes.
Okay. Oh, sorry, thank you. That's because we are limited in time, folks. We do our best, we do our best, so thank you. Yes, sir, please.
Cheyenne Lurve. So on the setbacks, they're a bit ridiculous if you're on a two-acre parcel. On the setbacks, they're a bit ridiculous. If you're on a two-acre parcel and you've got 200 feet setback, and you're not that wide across, it's kind of hard. And the other one, there's not going to be any ag if we don't do stuff about invasive species. We have coconut rhinoceros beetle wiping out everything, and no one's doing anything. Gabard got us 20 million for invasive species, the governor cut it down to 10 million. We need at least 100 million to adequately try and attempt to stop it. And then, yeah, we don't want little vacation huts all around, but if we, and even if we want tourism, we need coconut trees, palm trees, everything's going to be gone, and it's already wiping out. And you're finding CRB underneath mock orange bushes and other things, and everywhere. Guam is gone. We need exemptions to bring in other things to wipe it out. Tonga fought it off by burning all of their green waste. We need to have some incineration exemptions, or we need to have areas where people can drop off contaminated material. We don't address any of that. And that's just the coconut rhinoceros beetle. There's vast other ones that need to be addressed, and we are not. And there will be no farming if we don't stop the invasions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir, really appreciate it. Russell, come on up.
Let's have a hand for Adam. He, you know, he gets a little excited, but he means well. He's very spirited. I think what Adam is trying to say, and what I feel, is you got to look carefully at Bill 64, because it's very long. I went through like three-quarters of them last night. They sneak in a lot of things, along with a couple candies they throw you, you know, they, oh, this looks good, but you got to read all this, all this. And I think one part, and I have property on the hated, dreaded Mahiko subdivision. I'm going to let you guys know that, because there's a few people in here that don't like that place. And I was very happy to see the mayor come drive around in our little property, but he didn't stop where we could give him a, you know, show him what we're doing over there. So maybe we're not the problem. Maybe Mahiko is the solution. Go to Malama Market and fill up on small soda box for $58, or try and feed your family. And you're going to tell yourself, we need farming, we need some people to grow some stuff. If you're going to grow stuff on your land, you got to stay there, because if not, you're going to get ripped off left and right, like Mike said. So I think in the bill, it says a part, like, the farm dwellings, which I think, then farm worker dwellings, but there's also a section that says that if Bill 64 passes, Mahiko would never advance to a CPR or a subdivision. There is a section in there, and I'm not that smart to read all this legal jargon, but be careful, be careful when you read them. Be careful, because get hidden things in there that only suitable for certain people. And go follow the money. That's all you got to do, follow the money, because somebody.
Thanks, Russell, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate the comment. Okay, I see some more people out there. Anybody else? Canoa, did you want to say anything? Nope, nope, he's good. Okay. Any other comments, community? I just want to say, I appreciate what Mr. Lee had to say. That's not why we stopped him, is because you all are very good about following the rules. And again, we have limited time, we try to make sure that we get to everybody, and your comments are just as important. And so, as you see, everybody here tonight has followed that, and I am, is my job to enforce that rule. That's what I sign up for. So I appreciate you understanding that. I do agree on the vacation cabins. I have personally sent in testimony myself to exempt, and I would say, if this board makes a motion tonight on this reso, I would want to amend the reso to remove vacation cabins from the definition of nature-based recreation. I literally read the spill 64 twice on Sunday. That marked-up blue copy with all the tabs, that's mine. So I really went through it pretty thoroughly. We cannot deal with every little thing. That's why it's so important that every person here takes a moment and really focuses in. You can only really focus in on what's important to you, and I appreciate that. So thank you all for coming and listening and sharing your manao with us, it's so very important. So, go ahead, Raquel.
So I'm just going to address really briefly to Russell's point of the CPRs. I don't think anyone disagrees that if you have ag land and your ability to be on that land and live on it, I personally don't disagree. But what you need to be sure of is, are you zoned for that? If you are zoned for it, then yes, you should be able to, because being present when you have livestock or crops is critical nowadays, especially with the theft and vandalism and all that stuff. So it is important to understand your zoning, but when you have a CPR project, you can have as many lots as you want, but the underlying zoning still remains, because you are not subdivided. Many of these CPR lots haven't even been CPR'd yet, so there's a process that has to go through. And when you get there, you can. I don't believe that there was anything in there that would eliminate any specific project, but you still have to go through the steps to get to that point. And what we are trying to do is ensure that our community, that these projects sit in, those projects impact our footprint and our ability to use the resources within our community. If you have a project that we're not aware of how many units are going in, and they're going to take water from you, you should be concerned. If they're going to have wastewater, you should be concerned. Those are all the things that we want to ensure are addressed within that bill. It is not to block out anyone specific, but ensure that the land is protected as well. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from anybody? Casey? Oh, Leaf, did you have something? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to the one comment.
You got to come up to the front, I'm sorry, thank you. We record this, so we want to make sure that we get everything. Thank you.
Okay, I have two minutes, I know that much. And hopefully, I can breeze through this real fast. My husband and I bought a place out in Mahiko, and we are very proud of it. And our goal is to be sustainable, is that the word, babe? For my children and my grandchildren and my grandchildren to follow, and their children. The thing is this, okay? You are all up here saying this and saying that. I understand some and I don't understand some. The thing is that we are asking, okay, if you're saying if we are not zoned, you are people here that are supposed to help us possibility of helping us how to get zoned. If there is an answer for it, why not share it? I'm pretty sure if I had something, I worked in the medical field for 35 years in the ER. Families are dying out there because their elders are gone. We, as a family, are trying to be sustainable for our families. So if anybody up here can help us as farmers, I'm not a farmer, but man, I'm in there. So, if anybody up here can help us as farmers — I'm not a farmer, but man, I'm in there. But if anybody up here can help us that knows how to do it, why not share it? Or we wouldn't be fighting this system right now. That's how I look at it. I'm pretty sure some of you had land that wasn't zoned and know there's info out there on how to get it zoned. And I do have a large livestock. I have two. But the thing about it is, we, as farmers, we need help. Some of us are new to this. But if you have information that can give to us to help us to get that zoned, why not share it? It doesn't cost anything.
Actually, great question, ma'am. I really appreciate you bringing that up. And that's what our ag committee is also for, is to help provide information. So, I'm going to let our ag chair address that.
So, that's a very valid concern, but we are not the ones to provide your zoning. Your developer does that. When the developer purchased the property, they come up with the plan. None of us — that has never come to this board. Our — the plan has never come. Anybody can come in and buy a couple hundred acres, and we're not aware until they decide to do a plan that requires them to come in front of us. So, if your developer came to you and said, "Here's some lot for you. You can buy it," that is a plan that they need to provide and need to address with you in that plan. That has — and then if they wanted to rezone, then they would have to be — come in front of us. But that has never happened. So, when you come to details of your lot and what you're able to do, that falls on the developer or the landowner. So, if you have a lot that you have your own TMK to, and you wanted to rezone, that would be on you to go and apply for that. But right now, it's a developer. Any developer, the guy that bought the 3,300 acres up the hill, the guys down here in Mokulea, anybody, including — where is he, Dave? They have a project, and if they wanted to rezone, they're the developer. They have to go and pursue that. There's no way we would know that that's what wants to be done. So, it's the developer's project. He purchased it. His planning has to address all of what you need, and that's what you would need to go to. When it comes time for it to be presented, then we would absolutely address it for you. But it has nothing to do with us. We just follow what the zoning exists for that land.
Yeah, ma'am, you do have to come up, because I'm so sorry. I apologize. We do record this, and it's — your questions are very important to us, and we want to make sure everybody hears them.
So, if I under one TMK, I can actually apply for my own CPR without my developer if my developer is dead?
That's a great question, ma'am. So, what I would recommend, this is what I would like to ask our ag committee to do, I think — ma'am, what is your name? I apologize.
Luella Robertson.
Thank you, Luella. I appreciate that. Luella, I think Luella brings up some excellent points, and I think we've had DPP come out before and talk about these issues. It's been about three or four, five years now. So, I think maybe this is something the ag committee could take up, and I — make sure you sign in so we can get it, and then let us know that you're interested in the ag committee. I know you came in with Dell, so we can get ahold of you through Dell, too. But we really want to make sure that we're addressing your needs in the terms of providing information. Raquel's right, we can't do it for you, but if we can provide you with information, we would love to do that. That's our job, is to try and provide people with as much information as we can. So, that is a great question. Thank you very much.
Um, just to be clear, too, the CPR process, and I've been through it a few times, so you're not going to want to hear this, but that is a state process. The state has to certify that process. When they're done with it, and it's done, and you've got your CPR lot, then it gets transferred to the county for management.
Okay. I've got all the time in the world.
Good. So, you just have to do that, and we're happy. Sign in, and we'll reach out to you, and we can go further with you.
Okay.
So, this, I would recommend that this becomes a topic for the ag committee moving forward. Thank you. Great questions. We really appreciate it, and we want to be here as a resource for all of you. So, we have this reso, guys, so I'm going to put it back to Casey. Go for it.
Just really quick response to the comment on the 5,000-square-foot. I just wanted to mention that was a topic that we did bring up in the ag committees. This is the 5,000-square-foot build envelope for a farm dwelling. We brought up lowering that, and there was opposition within the agriculture committee from farmers. Number one, the farm dwelling is accessory to the agricultural activities. That should be enough to ensure that it is not a gentleman farm if things are enforced appropriately. But number two, there was a desire not to punish farmers. Why do we need to place more restrictions on what farmer's house than a non-farmer's house? We did discuss that as a way to potentially reduce gentleman farms, and that was very firmly rejected. I do know that it also came up through legislature three years ago and was also firmly rejected. So, just FYI. And the other thing I wanted to say is, if anyone would like to see the rest of the agriculture committee's comments on the rest of the agriculture portions, if you'd like to take a look at it as you're considering what testimony that you would like to submit in advance of Bill 64, please give me your email after this meeting.
Okay, at this point, any other further comments from anybody hearing, seeing none? Do we have a mo — yes, Leaf.
Just one fast one. I recently read a story that happened in America where the housing development moved near to the farm. Actually, they took the farmland, made housing development, and so they moved into the farmland. And there's a farmer still farming on the opposite side. The housing development was trying to force the farmer to stop doing certain farming because it was interfering with them. Dust, animal smell, engine sounds. And the farmer took it in his own hands, but I don't know if that can be written in there, that if you move to the farm, you got to put up with what was there first, not change them, because that's not right.
Thank you, Leaf. I appreciate that. Okay. At this point, did we wish to make a motion? And I do have that amendment about removing vacation cabins from the nature-based recreation. Yes, go ahead, Casey.
The nature — the nature-based section, is that part of the agricultural section?
Yeah, it's part of the definitions, one of the definitions, and it does affect ag. And I can actually — I already sent in testimony about that, where you'd have to get a major conditional use permit, but it's for ag 2 and preservation 2. And my personal concern is that people will come in, as we've talked previously, buy up ag 2 land and then put up vacation cabins. And that's not what we want. Again, we're one natural disaster away from starvation. All you guys know this. I'm not telling you anything you don't know already as farmers. You know how hard it is to grow. So, go ahead, Casey.
You were saying the resolution would be to add the clause that would remove vacation cabins from the definition of nature-based activities.
Correct. And there's also another citation in there. Hold on one second. Let me find out where is my stuff. Ah, okay. On page 73 of Bill 64, Nature-Based Recreation Standards, I would also want to delete the overall density for cabins. It also references cabins, so I'd want to delete that as well. So, two amendments, actually, or one amendment dealing with vacation cabins.
And the way we did it is by topic. That would be two recommendations within the same topic.
Yes.
So, we would need a motion from — to include — I make a motion to vote on including that amendment? Is that what I need to do?
So, what you would do at this point is you would make a motion on the resolution as amended to add in the language regarding deleting vacation cabins from ag 2 and P2.
So, I am making the motion for the board to vote. Did you want to make a motion to add homesteading in addition to microfarms? Sash? I make a motion to vote on the resolution as amended to include an additional topic that would adjust the definition of nature-based activities to not include vacation cabins. Does anyone second the motion? We have a second.
Charlene seconds the motion. Any further discussion from the board? Okay. If there's no further discussion, and yes, Maka.
You alluded to next month's meeting agenda. Are you able to give a preview of what might be on that?
I don't know yet, to be honest with you. I have a number of items that have come in recently, so.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Yes, Denise.
Just to clarify, if we pass this motion, it will be comments submitted, I hope, tomorrow because the hearing is Thursday? Okay. Thank you.
We'll be going home and getting this in. Yes. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from anybody, community? Any other comments or questions? Yes, go ahead, Charlene.
I'm a bit confused about the housing and working the farm, because there's this whole thing called wolfing, right? Where people come and they work the farm, and they're like living in tents or something on the property. I mean, it's a worldwide thing. And I said, "No, how does that mix into the housing and the dwellings and all that?" I'm just confused.
Would anyone like to take on the wolfing question? Charlene has a question. How does wolfing work into all of the housing? Anyone here does that? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Hearing no other questions or anything, we're going to take roll call vote. Thank you.
Yes. Achu. Eldridge. Alexander. Anderson. Antalini.
Aye.
She's not here. Carson Fisher. Clemente. Fitzsimmons. Full. Tamqu. Lenao. Uncle Bob. Uncle Bob. Michael Lyons. McCandie. Blake.
Aye.
Pahinui. Eleven eyes. Zero nose. Three abstain. Adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your input. And again, this isn't the end of the process. This is just a committee hearing. We're sending in comments for. So, we do encourage everyone to go to the — turn in testimony, listen to it, send in written testimony. It's still got to go to a public hearing for the four councils. So, there's many more steps to go before this thing gets adopted and approved. So, thank you, everyone, for coming in and sharing all your manao with us tonight. Really appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Okay. Moving on to elected officials. We're going to take this slightly out of order, because I've been waiting for — somebody's been waiting very patiently. So, we've got two people that Representative Peruso wanted to honor tonight. And so, go ahead, Representative. So, we're just going to go from back to front instead of front to back this time. Thank you.
Okay. I want to do this expeditiously, because I know that folks are really tired, but I also think that this is really important. So, I'd like to first ask former State Senator Gil Rivera to please come up to the front of the room. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just read the certificate, the resolution that commends Senator Rivera for his work on the Kauai-Hopai airfield. So, whereas, Kauai-Hopai airfield, formerly known as Dillingham Airfield, is a general aviation airfield that is part of the Dillingham Military Reservation leased to the Hawaii Department of Transportation from the United States Army. The facility is a joint military-civil-use airfield, but is primarily used for commercial glider and skydiving operations. And whereas, Army began leasing Kauai-Hopai to the DOT in 1972. In 1983, a 25-year lease agreement was signed, making the DOT responsible for operating and maintaining the water system. And in 2009, a new lease was negotiated. And whereas, for 50 years, the DOT operated and maintained the water system at the airfield as part of its lease agreement with the Army. However, in 2020, the DOT determined it was in the state's interest to return the airfield to the Army. And whereas, former Hawaii State Senator Gil Rivera, who represented District 23, has long been an ardent supporter of those operating out of Kauai-Hopai airfield, he introduced legislation in 2021, pushing for the transfer of the airfield from the DOT to the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism, the creation of a revitalization task force to address the issues necessary to keep the airfield open and operating safely, the county's ability to maintain and operate any airfield or airport, and establishment of an independent authority that would allow continued private and commercial use of the airfields. And whereas, Gil Rivera introduced Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 200 in 2022, requesting the Chairperson of the Board of Land and Natural Resources to work with the Secretary of the Army and United States officials to enter into the necessary agreements to effectuate the conveyance of the relevant lands of the airfield to the state of Hawaii. And whereas, Gil Rivera has been integral to efforts to repair the airfield's water system and create a new water users cooperative, but more importantly, to explore the possibility of a long-term lease agreement. Now, therefore, the House of Representatives of the 32nd Legislature of the state of Hawaii hereby honors the remarkable contribution of Gil Rivera and his dedication to protecting Kauai-Hopai airfield and its community, and extends to him its warmest aloha and best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors.
Thank you very much.
And I would also like to call Ben Devine to come forward. It's going to take him a minute, because it's my understanding that he's experienced an injury. But I think it's also really important to recognize this gentleman for all the work that he's done on this same endeavor. So, I'm going to skip the historical context, because we just heard about that, but I want to talk a little bit about Ben. In this resolution, it reminds us that whereas Ben Devine is the founder and director of Save Dillingham Airfield, a legal defense organization formed in 2020 after the DOT announced its plans to no longer lease the airfield from the Army, he's worked diligently to ensure a secure future for the airfield's businesses and employees. And whereas Ben Devine has been integral to discussion regarding the lease agreement between the Army and the DOT, he facilitated communications between various stakeholder groups, including state legislators, congressional representatives, Army leadership, the Federal Aviation Administration Regional Director, Department of Transportation leadership, the Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources, airfield tenants, and water users. And whereas, after the discovery of water leaks in 2023, Ben Devine kept the community apprised of the issues and pursued various avenues to develop a water cooperative to administer water. And whereas, the Army — while the Army and the DOT recently entered a new 50-year lease for the airfield, Ben Devine, who is also a master parachute rigger on the airfield, maintains his unwavering commitment to ensuring that Kauai-Hopai airfield remains open to all and will be a space for all future aviation — all future aviation enthusiasts to enjoy. Now, therefore, the House of Representatives of the 32nd Legislature of the state of Hawaii hereby honors the remarkable contributions of Ben Devine and his dedication to protecting Kauai-Hopai airfield and its community, and extends to him its warmest aloha and best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. And that's all I have.
Well, no, go ahead. Give us your really quick report. Oh, Ben, did you want to say a couple of words?
And I just wanted to thank this board and everybody here that gave so much help to make sure that that happened. My deep appreciation to everybody. I don't want to take too much time naming individuals, but you guys know who you are. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Ben. And heal quickly. Keep going.
We're not in session. I don't have much to report, with the exception of the fact that there's a lot going on in the district with respect to land management. We're going to be asking ADC for a full report on their tenants and the agricultural uses to which the tenants are putting those leased lands. So I would appreciate the support of this board in that endeavor. And I will report back on the findings from ADC.
Great. And cesspools, obviously, are a big issue, so we want to make sure that that's being come back to us with legislation and stuff, so.
Yeah. Keep working on that. Oh, yes. Monday, at Wahiwa Elementary, we're having a land use and housing forum from 6:00 to 7:30, and it'll be Councilmember Wire and myself talking about legislation we recently passed around densification, which is important to this audience, clearly, and affordable housing. So we're looking at what passed and then how the county plans to implement it. So please come. There'll be light poo-poos. Everyone's welcome.
Great. Any questions for Representative Board Members? When is it? Could you repeat that?
On Monday, the 30th, at Wahiwa Elementary. 6:00 p.m.
Thanks, Erica. Any questions, audience, for Representative Peruso? Hearing none? Okay. I saw Rep. Quinlin coming in and out. Is he outside? There he is. Okay. Thanks, Representative. Thank you, Amy.
All right. Hello, everyone. Today's obviously a very hard day, a tragic day for a lot of us, so pardon me if I'm not my usual self. So I'll be brief because I see Councilmember Wire has a report to give. But the Van Emmerich, the two houses are critically endangered. They're probably going to fall into the ocean soon. Huge portions of it have already fallen in. Glass, metal debris. There are two cesspools located on the property. I have an emergency meeting tomorrow to speak with DLNR, Department of Health, DPP, and Attorney General's Office, as well as OCCL. We're going to figure out what the fastest way is that we can go in there, take care of those cesspools before the effluent reaches the near-shore ecosystem. And I'm asked the AGs to be present because in a lot of cases, when people do really horrible things, we find them a lot. We place a lien on the house, we place a lien on the property. In this case, the property is now worth negative money because there's remediation associated with it. And I don't want this person who has concreted the beach, who has ignored dozens of orders of violation, who has thundered nose at our community and all of our city and state departments to get away scot-free without having to at least, at the very least, pay for the cost of the cleanup and the mitigation for all the damage he's done. Turtle Bay expansion is coming up. I've been working with Denise. She gave me a great briefing on the unilateral agreement. So I think, you know, we'd like to bring all parties to the table and start negotiating with the new owners of the property to make sure that our voices are heard. I did send a letter to DPP about a week ago, asking them to pause or delay issuing building permits for Arate, the luxury condo development, to give all of us a chance to better digest and understand. Not everybody gets a private briefing from Denise. Just for us to understand what it is that we're dealing with and, you know, what approach that we would all like to take as a community to the development. And I just want to say, you know, Betty Sarat passed away today. And she was a wonderful mother and a great community member. And many, many moons ago, she was very, very kind to a junior realtor in Richard Sterman's office. And she was loved, and she'll be very dearly missed. So thank you. That is my report.
Any questions for Representative? Yes, Mike?
Yes, Representative. Obviously, this one house is owned by the bank.
Well, I just got a text that it might not be. So we've got some news sources that are looking into it. Now Denise is shaking her head.
According to the news.
Yeah.
So in any case, whoever took the responsibility of lending money for this house, the buck stops there. And you should go in and clean it up, and then bill the person who should have done it. But, you know, this is exigent. You've got to do it like yesterday. And this house apparently was empty, the one that fell. So they've had a lot of time to augment this. So I would suggest you go send people in there, clean it up, do a condemnation, and then go back and get the money from the lender. Because the lender accepted this liability when they loaned it to the owner or the potential owner. So I would say, go for the lender. You'll get your money, and it'll be a lot quicker.
I'll definitely bring that up with the Attorney General's Office tomorrow. Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions? Yes, Raquel? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Blake, I didn't see you. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you for sharing all those words in your presentation tonight. Thank you. Appreciate it, hearing that. Yeah, I was just trying to echo what Member Lyons' acquisition is on the table for all of those threatened properties because it feels as if there's an impasse that has been reached long ago. And it doesn't seem like private management of those resources is leading to the best outcomes for the public that highly values that area and now has made that area impassable and unusable and obviously super hazardous to the rest of us. And so I'm hoping that that would be a priority, is that perhaps acquisition would provide the most access to the widest variety of management and stewardship tools moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Blake. And, you know, all options are on the table. And we've also got the North Shore Beach Management Study that we'll be getting some results from in the next couple of years. So I think that'll inform a lot of our decisions since we have good data from our University of Hawaii scientists.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Raquel?
Thanks, Sean. I know you mentioned, you know, there's two cesspools, you said? I don't know what your meeting brings out tomorrow, but the thought of that actually going into the water is hugely concerning. Is there, does it make sense or is there opportunity to have someone go in tomorrow and at the very least just pump everything as much as you possibly can right out of the gate before waiting for?
Yeah, so we're waiting for more details from wastewater branch. There was a situation like this in Punluu recently. And I believe they ended up sealing it off like a tomb. So I'll learn more at the meeting tomorrow, but that's definitely on the table, too.
I don't know if this is good news or bad news, Raquel, but I lived in the house that's falling into the ocean during the entire '80s. And this is why I say it's not good or bad news. But we never had that cesspool pumped. We don't even know if there was one on the property. So I don't think there's anything in it, is what I'm saying. Well, right on the sound, I'm pretty sure it just went right out into the ocean. I don't know where it went. I don't know. All I know is it lived there for over eight years, and we never had it pumped once, and it never came. I mean, it was just, I don't even know where it was. So, yeah, I don't know if that's good or bad news.
Okay. I hope there's a statute of limitations on that, Karen.
Yeah, really. Canoa, did you have something? And then the gentlemen in the back, please come forward.
I just want to share something super personal. So we live in the town of Haleiwa. And for most of us, if we've lived here long enough, we can recall the Eva bird soaring throughout many days, you know, back in the day. And I just want Mr. Rivera to know that what you did for the airport was, you know, probably really great in a lot of people's eyes, but I just want you to know the impact that that had. So as a Keiki, I can always recall seeing the Eva birds flying from Kaina Point, all of Mokalea coming out. That was their habitat where they lived. We'd hear them crying at night when we would camp, and we'd tease our friends about the sounds that they would hear because they would make these sounds. And throughout my life here, I've seen the Eva bird leave. They're here no more. And because of the increase of air activity, you know, the private companies that are there doing skydiving, the private people who own the glider companies, they're always zipping in that area, and it's forced the Eva bird to move from Haleiwa. And to me, I just want you to know this. Like, when we make decisions about these kind of things, like, we're thinking we're doing something really good, and I'm sure there's benefits. But the benefit, you know, what people don't notice is things like that. You know, the Evas have now moved on. And that's my two cents.
Thanks, Canoa. Appreciate your sharing. Thank you.
So about the crap down there, we all know that a lot of the cesspools over there, some of them go into lava tubes, other ones directly into the ocean. It's been that way for years. These are million-dollar homes, and no one's put in a septic system or anything, or a sewer system in that area, or even tried to. Why?
Actually, no, it's not the case. It's more than that. It's more than that. Please use the microphone. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So I was here on NPR today that Kauai was talking about giving grants of $20,000 to deal with cesspools to get them into septic. But even they say that wasn't enough because if you did it 10 years ago, it would have been less. The longer we take, it's going to be more. Why don't we address the situation? And also, the setback should be a lot further for that area. This house is built on sand, as are many of these other houses. There's no reason for these houses to be there. Traditionally, the people that lived here never had houses on the beach. They lived up country. So that's it.
Good points. Go ahead. Go ahead, Representative.
Okay. So the county did increase the setbacks. So for a lot of these houses, if any part falls in the ocean, you know, they can't rebuild the home. They have to move it further back. In order to fully, we've got 88,000 cesspools in this state, of which 45,000 are in imminent danger to human health. We do water testing up and down the coast. Probably the worst spot on our stress of coastline is Kahalu. And that's in large part due to the river. What we have to do is, there needs to be a mixture of state and county and federal response to this. The problem with giving grants is a lot of times when you give a large grant program, all the people who install cesspools just raise their prices similar to the dollar amount of the grant, especially if it's widely distributed. We're only installing a few hundred septic systems per year right now. We don't, even if the state said, okay, here's $2 billion, we're going to convert every single person from cesspool to septic, and the state's going to pay for it. We literally don't have enough companies that install septic today to get that done. Not that we have the $2 billion. And by the way, it wouldn't be $2 billion anymore. It's probably more like $4 to $5 billion. So in areas that are closer to sewage treatment plants, or where there is the right density or geography or topography to allow for sewer laterals, without getting into easements and eminent domain and ripping up roads and very expensive types of construction, we can do that. We can extend sewer laterals. In a lot of our district, we would have to come up with a way for the state to subsidize somehow the installation of septic systems. A lot of people, even if they live in beachfront homes, they might have bought them in the '70s, the '80s, the '90s. They're now retired, they're on a fixed income. If we give an income tax credit, which we had for a while, they have no income against which to take the tax credit. Septics are also, to some extent, a very bespoke system. Every yard is different. The size of every yard is different, slopes, again, geography, different systems. We are looking at individual wastewater systems that can service 20, 30 homes. That's a shared cost amongst homes. It could be $50,000, $75,000 a home. Not everybody has that. There's a state step in then and then subsidize that. We're having discussions now about bulk purchase of the materials to install septic systems. Actually, that's involved, right? So, you know, could the state bulk purchase linings, tanks, parts of the system? Absolutely. And I hope that we can do that over the next few years. We just had our cesspool working group, which went for four years, finished last year. They made some recommendations. We do have a law on the books that all of our cesspools have to be converted by 2050 into septic systems. I don't think we're going to hit that target quite quickly. And we have to be very careful that whatever we do isn't going to essentially bankrupt people on fixed income. So there is, I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that there's a simple or easy answer. We have a long way to go, and I apologize for rambling.
No, actually, thank you. As you know, sir, we have a cesspool committee. If you'd like to join us, we'd love to have you. We do it online, so you don't have to leave your home. So, but everything Representative stated is completely on target and on mark. It's expensive, and it's going to be very complicated. So the more mines we pull together, the better off we are. We have a few minutes left. I do want to get to, yeah, go ahead really quickly.
Just a super short mahalo to Representative Quinlin because when I alerted him this morning, he immediately took action. And when that alert went out from your office to the county, to the state, they all responded. So that's what we need, and I super appreciate that, and wish us luck in this meeting tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot. The governor's task force on climate change will be present in the personage of Board Member Anthony.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you, Representative. They're giving us a couple of minutes tonight because they were late opening up, so we're good.
Aloha, Chair, members and community. I'll try to make this news as quick as possible. I was actually kind of excited hearing your guys' moratorium talk on record. We introduced a moratorium bill, SB 2626, didn't get much movement, but it would have prevented developments. We were looking at that one from Maui specifically because of all of the attraction to the land after the burning there. That didn't move. What did move out of the Senate, and we passed it as a study, was the bill to prohibit foreigners from buying homes here. We're working on a new way to tailor that bill for next session, along with two other bills, one to target ag lands, preventing foreigners from buying ag lands, and one preventing foreigners buying around military lands. Moving on from that to add-on to Representative Quinlin's update about the homes, we've been talking with DLNR as well. This is a text message. Just want to read this to add-on from Don Chang, Director. Says, "We have a complaint. We, DLNR, has a complaint filed against the landowner this evening to remove the debris, and is asking the court if the owner doesn't remove. Can the state remove it, file a lien against the owner? They're taking aggressive action," they said, "and coordinating with the city." To the coconut rhinoceros beetle, the Department of Agriculture is coming out with an emergency proclamation. It'll be on the governor's desk next week. Right now, it's with the AG. It's going to do two things. It's requesting to eliminate the fee for burning and cut down the time for the permit. Alongside of that, hand-in-hand, and our community will be up front, up first in line for this. There's $400,000 that was supposed to go to the counties. That money's not going to go to the counties to mitigate green waste anymore. They want to throw it to communities. So we've been looking at lands. Let us know if you guys, like, contact our office because this is imminent. But let us know what you think about the emergency order when more information on that comes out. Also, where we could put, if you guys wanted, I heard somebody earlier say we need a green waste drop site. So the state wants to do that. The Department of Ag wants to do that. D-BED has lands up here. They could do it on those D-BED lands. We're waiting to hear back from both agencies. But that $400,000 could be put to use where we could get a community green waste drop site. The Department of Ag would then burn on those sites. And they're looking at the North Shore. Again, I said, we're first in line. The other one would be Wa Manalo, and the other one would be the Leeward Coast. After CRB, we had homeless. I'll try to wrap this up. I got a couple more homeless. There was a sweep today at Haleiwa Harbor. I didn't check on the update. But one of the residents that live there qualifies for the state's return, the homeless home program. There's $50,000 that's being put into that. We helped Representative Mizuno at the time, that was his bill, pass it. He's now the homeless coordinator with the governor's office. So he has prerogative. He wants to work and get some people out of this neighborhood. We're working on that. What was after that? Liz? Elizabeth? Was that the next one, after the homeless? Okay. So our coconut tree food project there, that was in response. It was supposed to be a project back in to be a project back in April. Oh, real quick, let me back up. Since getting onto office, I always, you know, as the Chair knows, we always would put out the invite, you know, for the Neighborhood Board to, to the Chair, to join us at anything. We did the same thing for that project. Unfortunately, this time, we were met with a lot of resistance, that project was tried to shut down. So we basically did was say, you know what, we're going to hold the board out. So my apologies to all the members, especially Sash and some of the ones who helped out on the project, for leaving you guys in the dark, but that was, you know, I believe in accountability, and if people are going to put up blocks, then, you know, and not want to work with us, we're a horse with blinds. We're going forward with projects to hopefully solve some of our community's problems. That project was a two-pronged project to attack CRB, and that came after a community meeting. We had over 100 community members show up, addresses from this area. So it was very community involved, again, apologies, you know, the board. We had to take that stand, but now we're here. And so you guys can reach out to us, you guys can work. Real quick, did Representative Quinlan mention the speed mitigation? No?
No, but we got a lot of stuff from DOT.
You guys got it.
Yeah, we got the news release that I sent you guys. They've already started.
You guys got it.
Kona Hua. I know we got some speed bumps going over Good Dale.
Abay Vilan? So, yeah, thanks for the 100 people who signed on to that, got the DOT's process going. That speed mitigation should be coming in that area. And lastly, just so it's on record for Charlene, DOT, like we told you, is scheduled to go look at your tree to, to trim or cut down. That's my update. Thank you.
Okay, except you could have emailed me and told me about the project, and I could have shared it with everybody, so thank you very much. I mean, a lot of people were very surprised. Also, who's paying for the water, since I work for the water company?
Well, I guess taxpayers will be paying. We're getting it from Board of Water and, and Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Okay, so who's paying?
We're not paying. Nobody's paying.
Okay.
So like in Kahalu, BWS, as you would probably know, has been filling us up, and DLNR has been filling us up, so we're not paying anything.
Okay, so in other words, we're all paying for. I just want to be clear, you know, because that is our.
Oh, yeah, I mean, taxpayers are paying for the water to water the trees.
Taxpayers are paying for it. Okay. Thank you very much. Sash?
Yeah, I just want to say mahalo, Senator, for putting that together and bringing the community together and planting coconut trees, ulu trees. I mean, this providing food for generations to come. Also, educational segment on there on combating CRBs. We put netting around the coconut trees. We monitor it weekly, and part of the watering is, we, you know, our own homes, too, are watering, so we're paying ourselves. I'm part of watering it, too, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you to Sash, the Dalins, and a couple others who have volunteered to, to water with their totes.
Okay, thank you. Blake, you had your hand up.
Thanks for your presentation. Yeah, I'm glad Sash was just able to explain the attempt to control the beetles. That was something that was on my mind. I was trying to understand what's going to happen with the beetles, and it feels like a lot of people in the community are offering services, using some kind of poisons and whatnot, and I was just really concerned about any kind of poisons close to Ukua Pond, and so I think that is the kind of thing that, when people talk about having presentations to the community associations and community boards, that's the kind of topic that I think people deserve to hear about before major initiatives are undertaken, especially in the midst of what has already been described this evening multiple times as a major disaster. And I think it should be on everyone's mind, too, with the treatments that people are putting on coconut trees, what kind of efforts are being made to make consumers aware of what may or may not be in any coconuts that they're consuming from this point moving forward. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for bringing that up. If I can add to that, out in Kahalu, you know, in our district, we got four of the seven $25,000 grants to combat CRB. One of the residents over there is using part of that $25,000 to label trees, so they've got red bands and green bands, are going to come out with a pilot project, and we'll introduce a bill to try to get that for the rest of the state. We're working with the Department of Ag, the DOT, DLNR, to find a mapping, basically, of all the trees that have been poisoned. We're going to, we're going to red-tag those in our area up there to start. Hopefully, we can work. There was two people out here who got the grant, and do similar things if, if that's a want. But, yeah, that's, that's an important topic. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else have questions? Any other comments? Yes, Canoa, please come forward. Thank you, sir. And this is the last question, because we really do, I mean, Timo is being very kind to us tonight, because they were late opening up, but we do need to respect our time.
In regards to the. Thanks. So in regards to the coconut rhinoceros beetle, so a few of my trees on, on our farm had been decimated, and there was a, there was one that started the, in one of the new palms, and I've been using, this is, this is, I'm no scientist, and I'm not really good at this, but this is just by coincidence, I used concentrated vinegar. But I was using it to kill weeds, and every time I would spray it, I would cough, and I would realize like, wow, this is like really strong stuff. So when the rhinoceros beetle got my new palm, I thought, okay, well, I'll try to pour it in. And what happened is, it made the environment, the beetle so bitter that the beetles had left, and they never came back. So the, so the palm continued, it, it survived. It came back, and new, new, like coconut, like palm fronds started coming out from it. So just sharing this, I don't know, maybe it's the start of something to look forward to, because at least it's not poison, right? It's vinegar, and it's just concentrated vinegar that I got from Amazon. So food for thought.
Thank you, Canoa. We appreciate that. Thank you, Senator. Okay, it's been a long evening, everybody, lots of good, positive discussion. Really appreciate everybody's time, and I call this meeting adjourned. Mahalo.